And you're so you're going to support all of them. All right, so next we have. Well, we. Robert, you're all set then, right?
Yes.
All right, so you understand what we're going to do off is take off that library article and we're going to sign it the way it is. And that is, before it gets too late, we need to deal with the issue of, the important issue of the night is Halloween. Yeah, I forgot, we're supposed to deal with this right away. Halloween.
We're all cleaned up.
You're all.
The exception of another hour or so, the work on initiatives, the staff, the polls, but everything will be back to normal.
So just if anybody's watching us at home, Halloween is officially declared to be on Halloween. The town is clean, open for business, and ready to accept all the hobgoblins prancing the streets this week. Halloween is not being moved, it's not a movable holiday. I meant to do that opening. My granddaughter will be happy. We have a joint meeting with the finance committee to review budget guidelines and expectations in preparation for FY14. Hi, guys.
Hi.
What's up?
Hi, we met last week with Reggie and Vicki. And went over the process and how we all thought would be, and Reggie's going to initiate the process. Because the way the guidelines are from the state is, town administrator can initiate the guidelines, have the first set of contacts with the departments, she goes through, then she submits it to the finance committee, and we meet with the departments and go over and try to bring it out. We're supposed to present it at the town meeting and support it. So that was a little difficult when we're doing all these years, but we looked it up and came to a kind of a meeting of the minds, Vicki was there, Reggie was there.
Can you go over those steps again? Can you say those steps again?
Pardon me?
Can you repeat those steps again? Reggie's going to contact the departments, I'm going to use that part.
Yeah, Reggie is going to work with, I think Derek actually did come up with the template. We use templates last year for the departments who want to do it all, I've tried. Some departments don't have capability, so she's going to work with them, send it out to all the departments, ask for their first wave of requests. And we talked about, Vicki can go that direction, we talked about doing a zero-based budget.
Oh.
So everybody has to build it from the ground up, rather than just add on to levels here. We all like that idea. Reggie, can we decide on a zero-based budget? Go in that direction?
I'm sorry?
We're talking about the budget process, a point number we met last week. Can we decide on a zero-based budget?
That's what you guys talked about, yes.
So do that, so everybody builds a budget from the ground up, has to justify everything there. She collects the first wave of requests from the department. We'll sit down with her and Vicki and go over that, then we'll call the department heads in and start going over that, you know, massage any requests. But the key is you want to all work together on this.
One exception to that, and we haven't, I haven't brought this up, but I, as a selectman, want to talk to the departments as they come in, like we did in the past, find out what their goals and objectives are with this money before we go there. Because I think that it's only right that the selectmen hear from the department heads directly what their goals are.
Couldn't that template have something about goals?
Well, absolutely, that is right. I mean technically, regarding to the guidelines, the law, whatever, finance committee, you know, presents it to the town and supports it and all that, what we talked about is it makes no sense if we don't worry about all and agree with it.
Oh, yeah.
We've got to go there.
I agree with you.
And fully support it, because if we're, if we're not agreeing at the town meeting, it's just more foolish. So we've got to have a whole process.
I mean, we've used a couple of different processes in my years on the board. First year as I was here, the select board was intimately involved. In the middle years, Diana did it, and then we kind of acquiesced to it. And last time around, I think we were more involved again. There's got to be a happy medium between the two of them. But I think the thing will be that the town administrators will be the focal point for the information coming in, and it'll be up the herd and disseminated to the rest of us. And then we'll have a joint meeting with everybody.
No, I mean, I'd like to bring department heads on the same kind of a schedule, like maybe three major department heads.
Well, that's what we didn't have.
And I want to know what they're, what they're planning as a board to, we will explain to.
I think that'd be a good joint meeting to bring them in.
Can you sign up with that article for the highway department?
If it doesn't need it, I won't.
I'm just asking, now that I handed it to you, I thought of that.
Okay.
I'm not, if you, you know, I don't want to screw it up.
No, I don't want to screw it up.
And what we were just talking about is, with a zero-based budget, you've got to justify everything.
Right.
And I think that's going to be a whole different process.
I think it's going to be more cumbersome, and I think, like tonight, typical example of, nothing against the library, but they came in and we have no, nothing to back up what their expense items are going to cover. And they're looking for all maintenance things here. And I'm sure they've already covered some of their stuff.
But I think that was just a misinterpretation of what they were supposed to do.
I don't know.
I think they just didn't realize that might be what we wanted.
We shouldn't be ignorant to the fact that, you know, money's been allocated, what's it covered, and we have a due process and a responsibility to say, this is something extra or something needed, or we have it already covered. I think those are honest questions that we should be asking in order for us to do our job.
When Reggie collects the initial information, she's going to be asking, I would think, for the backup, because if you just have a number or a front sheet.
You always have to justification.
Right, and actually, the template, not the template, that's the wrong word, the letter that she sent me asked to prioritize any, I forget what it, three priorities. To give us the three priorities you'd like to see above and beyond which you've had before, which I thought was a relatively good way of, you know, if the library wanted to repair the copula, that would have been specified and would have been identified.
In budgets, I mean, it seems like you're always building, building, building. A lot of times, what you do changes. Goes up or goes down.
Right.
You know what I mean? So by making them justify, they don't have to tell.
Well, this is a good idea, too, to look at things that were cut in the past that are now becoming an issue, and you can address them.
You get detail from somebody and you get their priorities, you're going to have an idea of what you need to spend those monies on. And then if they come to you with extra stuff, then you can say, yeah, well, it wasn't in your plan, why do you need this? Put it on the warrant.
Well, I guess what I, the zero-based budgeting is a different animal than we've used in the past, and I understand you're in favor of it. Is this board in favor of zero-based budgeting, or going back to something like we've done in the past?
It gets the departments thinking about what they actually want to spend the money on.
I don't disagree with you, Ann. I'm just asking, since it's a little change in the philosophy of what we've done in the past, and I understand you guys support it, and I don't say yes or no, I'm asking this board if they support it to get everybody in the same place at the same time.
So it doesn't assume anything that was prior, you really have to build your budget from, from scratch and justify everything?
Well, and I guess the perfect example is this library budget, which would have been $2,700 for repair copula, and $1,000 for landscaping, on, and repair furnace, and then the total being $27,822, instead of $27,820, and we're going to spend it on whatever we desire.
And just to extrapolate going forward, next year, you wouldn't see that $2,700 for the copula.
Right.
So the budget request will go down.
Should go down.
Nothing else replaced it.
Right.
So that's, that's where they have to justify.
Right.
So some will go down, some will go up, and we have to acknowledge both sides of it, right?
I'm going to bet with you on that, Ann, they don't go down.
But they're going to have to justify it, you know?
I guess that's the management technique that we're trying to impress, is that the management techniques is we're watching you, and you need to justify your expenses.
And one of the other techniques that I don't know that we can do anything with is when somebody goes on the floor and puts, you know, I need an extra staff member, and puts a warrant on the floor, and the town meeting says, yeah, we'll vote for it. We had that with, I think, a policeman last year. $25,000 to have a new police officer for the rest of the year. That's really a $70,000 vote, although the people were just voting for 25. Once you put it in there, the next year, you've got to put 70 grand in there for a full year in the benefit. So it's, it's a way to get somebody out there, and the money on that could just have to be there the next year.
Just to be clear, I think the select board supported the addition. No, no, I just don't want the department head to be taking it on the chin for something we supported.
Well, what I'm saying is by doing this zero-based budget, they can address that right now.
Oh, and I.
I need this first.
No, you were right, the 25 eventually classed as 70, you know, there's no doubt, but I don't want to make it, anybody thinking it was the department head who made that decision.
I think the department heads are doing their jobs in those cases, they've got to look out for their department, but let's try to give them as much room to present it as possible.
I think most departments, they have to start a zero budget, even in years past, to get to a number where their expenses are going to cost, what they're going to cost, what increases are going to be involved with these, rather than taking a level-funded approach to it and say, oh, this is what we got last year, we need templates set. And I don't think a lot of people looked at that, to justice the budget, if they're going to run a budget from top to bottom, because they would run out of money, or they would have too much money.
I think you're right with the three major departments, with the other ones, I think they're not, 10, 15.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but it makes, makes a lot of sense what you're proposing, and I'm not opposed to it.
So the question is, do we support it?
I do.
Is there a motion to, yeah, I think just for clarity's sake, to put our, to lend our weight and support to what the finance committee wants to do.
I move to support the zero-based budgeting.
For FY14?
Pardon, FY?
14.
Mike, I would like to see that letter you got there.
Yeah, no, she just sent it out to me for it. Oh, it's in the packages? Okay, she sent it to me on the email.
You need a second?
Yeah, yeah, we need a second on that motion. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. I think that's our only issue today, right?
That's good.
Good with us, too.
Yeah.
It's in your packet, right?
What's that?
It's a draft of the letter she sent out. I don't know where it is.
Some departments might be, maybe three.
Well, it's just, it's a suggestion. We're going to have an executive session at, at.
Um, at eight. Yeah, everyone.
I wish we could move that up, 8:30.
Okay, we've got an executive session at 8:30 for fire department, but before we do that, we did the secure, signatures, for the, we've got some more signatures that we need to come back to.
Okay. We can give the fire department a little floor, 30. Oh, yeah, please ask Mr. Colina.
Really can't do it, well, hey, can I speak to this? Reggie? Yeah?
The finance committee has one more topic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Hi.
We've got one, Dr. Analysts, one money. We probably have insurance fractures. Let's go ahead on that.
Not that I can recall.
Do what?
Do I recall?
That's what we wanted to show.
We only have warrants to pull money out of it.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Right.
But not to accept the money.
No, to pay, to make.
I think there was a blanket article years ago, I'm just saying, if I recall, about 10, 12 years ago, that any money came in, stayed in the fund, but I needed an article to take them out.
That's a question.
Take it out, yeah. Although the chief can spend some money.
This is true. Everything else can be appropriate.
Oh, all right.
I just have new meters he needs for the ambulances, and we thought that the best funding source is the ambulance fund.
Yeah, if it's going on the ambulances, it should probably.
So what was the answer? I didn't come.
We would need an article to be appropriate on it.
So will we put an article on tonight still for that?
I think it's late, but.
And he wasn't on the floor?
He used the money he has with an article to reimburse it, like you just suggested, from existing expenses.
Yeah, you can be real, it's about seven grand, town, we can do that.
About seven grand, eight thousand.
Seven, eight grand?
All right.
The one that Valerie has is about 8,000. I could find some ambulance. I put the 8,000 out only because I'm trying to find one with a printer. What this does is, when the person goes into cardiac arrest, it's a monitor, to monitor the CO coming out of that patient, to make sure the tube placement's correct. In the past, we used to listen with the best consultants, hey, if you're in there, you're not, we're making out these four of the floor monitors. Well, now it states as though you have to have this technology, it's mandated, I need two of them. This reading on the high side, so.
I'd like, Mike, like your bill, but you, you have enough money in your expenses now to take it out and get reimbursed, and say in January?
He has to say that, boss.
He's going to spend down about 12, 13 percent, so we looked at that. So you do for now?
Yes, I could.
And you're, how soon do you need these by?
Uh, January 1st.
Oh, okay.
So I couldn't really, I can take it out of the expense account, and I don't have a problem with the ambulance, I just didn't know if I could take it out here, or if that would go to the town meeting.
You get it?
It's got to come out of the town meeting.
Okay.
And take it out of the expense and try.
Then we'll make a transfer the next bill. Got it?
If he manages it real well, he'll.
Is everything all set, the council on aging grant?
What?
The council on aging grant?
Where am I on that?
Oh, I didn't know where you guys are.
Oh, I was just about, I got, there's some signature lines I was going to do here.
The finance committee does not have PCFs.
Oh, okay, so there's no PCS at this point, then?
And no PRS.
Are we?
There are two PCFs, excuse me, but the other ones.
Very good.
The police department, Disclose, the fire department, Richard, those are the two that they do have, the others they do not have.
All right, so where are those? All right here?
Yeah.
So we have PCF, Jason Disclose, I can't say his name. Reappointment for 20, original start date was 2010, part-time police officer. And we have a Richard Paul firefighter, replace, oh, replaces firefighter, Potvin, date of hire 10/28/12, $16 an hour. Anybody want to make a motion about these PCFs?
Some will.
All, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Who's Paul, Richard, is he replacing somebody?
Yeah, gentleman right here.
Oh, I see, replaces, okay, got you.
You sent, you have the town warrant over there, right, Ribs? This is the blank copy. All right, so that's just. Then we have, oh, did everybody hear about what happened with that contract grant, the roof guy?
No.
The pages were, the state sent.
Yeah. Where the pages were missing from?
The pages were missing from the middle of the contract.
The school.
Yes, and they sent us the pages they were looking for. And this is council on aging, that's not.
That one's not in, I didn't put that in the package.
Oh, that's not in the package, all right. So I bet, all right, so this is the council on aging thing you were asking me about.
So what did they?
They just wanted the board to see those missing pages.
Yes.
And this is a council on aging, this is a contract for our state formula grant that was signed by David McDougall on 8/7/12, copies attached. Two copies are attached, only one needs to be signed, the extra copy is in case a mistake is made. What is this for?
This is our state grant that we apply for every year. Does not cost the town, we get reimbursed fully.
It's for, it's for $20,618, I think.
Is this for the van?
I believe so, there's two that we do. There's one for the van and one for.
This doesn't look to be for the van.
I don't see if it's. Oh, there's a bunch of.
Council on Aging Formula Grant.
Right, so this is, this is state allocation that we go for every year, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to sign this. Some will.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Blue pen.
Blue pen?
I have that here.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, it's so dirty, this is. This must be what they're signing.
Mm-hmm.
Name of contract, it's really a contract, not a grant.
We get the money back.
And then we have the deed for the property on, I'm sorry. Oh, hang on, must have a better one. We have the deed from Mr. Michael Woe Towit, I guess, is the best I could do for Brickyard Road.
What item are you looking at on this agenda?
I think that's on page 55. That's where the board would do the motion, and 56 is where the deed.
Oh, yeah.
Begins.
This is the.
You should be chopping. Has the power now?
Yeah, she had it at 6 o'clock. What I have before me now is the transfer of property from Michael Woe Towit. You say it better?
Woe Towit, or something like that.
Okay, 178 Brickyard Road, and Cheryl Parker as court-appointed receiver. I mean, situated in Southampton, designated proposed open space area four of 22.27 acres. This is, as you may recall, the settlement on Mr. Woe Towit's property, going to divide out four frontage lots, we're going to take the backland along the river in exchange for our waiving of tax liens and other liens, I can't remember how much they total.
You may set a prior dollar note that we're not surpassing.
As long as it's below 50,000.
Yeah, something. But we're not actually spending any cash, we're waiving liens that we already have. So we are reducing our cash, but we're not spending it.
Here's a deed.
All right, do I have a motion to, to sign?
I move to sign the deed.
Move, actually what I'm looking for is a motion to approve, what is that, motion to approve by the board of selectmen, the transfer.
There's a motion in your separate piece of paper that has specific words in it.
Well, that's the motion we should read then.
Yes, that's the motion we want.
So, do we do it?
But this requires a notary, and Irene is not here, correct?
I think they just left. I'm, I'll move.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We can't do it unless we have a notary.
Oh, okay.
Unless, well, conservation has to assign it, too.
Well, they're going to have their meeting, they canceled their meeting last night, they're meeting again on 12th, and Katie Klein said that would be fine.
All right, here's what we can do.
Perpetuity.
Put the motion on record.
She's gone, if I can remember my expiration date.
2014.
Mine is 9/26, thank you. If you guys want to handle this, I'll, I'll be the notary to your signatures.
I thought you.
Can you do that?
Yeah. We've done it 100 times in the past, so take a motion.
Okay. So she's, she's going to read the motion, this motion is.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move that the Southampton Board of Selectmen affirm the vote of the Southampton Conservation Commission to accept a deed for property located off Brickyard Road, Southampton, from Michael J. Wojowicz.
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 All apologies if you're missing tonight.
Yes, sorry. And Cheryl A. Parker, receiver pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 8C, to be held for the sole purpose of conservation of natural resources and passive recreation, including, but not limited to, the conservation of species limited pursuant to GLC 131A, which shall be considered the most important conservation purpose for which this land to be protected in perpetuity.
Can we do this motion after conservation?
As she said, they.
Have you already approved it?
No.
Well, the verbiage, I thought, said that we had to concur that they approved it.
Tell council that that was fine. Charlie Donald reported he does not have a problem with it, Marty's report, they just had to cancel the meeting from last night, it seemed 11.
All right, fine.
Okay, a second. Motion?
Yeah, a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So you sign, guys sign it, and I'll notarize your signatures.
This top sheet?
Yeah. I think that's the one.
All right, it's doing that. Blue.
Yeah, I don't think it matters on that one.
Okay.
Um, we have anything else, Reggie?
One item is the Veterans Agent posting, the, as I reported, the finance committee does not have that paperwork, and it's just going to put you further behind in posting that job.
So he resigned?
This is one for Bob Messier.
That's Messier.
Okay, that's not the new.
We haven't, no, we haven't posted the.
Is he being, is coming?
I'll process the paperwork he did recently.
Bob and Mr. Hennig. Bob came in to help him through it. And that was Wednesday.
But this is not ready to be posted yet?
No, right, whatever, correct. That's how the paperwork is missing.
Has Mr. Hennig been doing the?
He came in with Bob Messier on Wednesday to process the payments which are in that warrant.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Clarification, the paperwork is missing, we don't have paperwork, or?
We have paperwork, but somebody's.
Hasn't been signed?
It's been signed by everybody but the finance committee.
Well, I mean, we gave a 12-week appointment, it's got to be three weeks into it, we've got to move on this.
Yeah. So is this thing to be found? I mean, it's in somebody's office, maybe, or just kind of misplaced?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Well, they haven't filed it. Once you talk to policy procedures.
I did.
Give it to them, and get it to us so we can get it.
I asked Robin through email, and she said that they don't have it, they sent it to the finance committee.
So, will you track that down? Please, okay. We don't have anyone, anything, anything, anything.
The last two things, you had a couple responses from residents in regards to Halloween.
Oh, we did that while you were out of the room.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, Halloween is Halloween.
Okay.
Anything else?
In the calendar?
Yeah, so we have a meeting on November, no.
No, the calendar is 2013 calendar, select board meeting calendar, where town offices arrange their office hours at the same time that you have your select board meeting.
Is that on here somewhere?
It is the last page.
Okay. But I mean, upcoming events is, November 6th is, we can't, we don't have a meeting because that's an election day, right? Can we have a meeting on election night?
No.
Well, it's 8 to 10 o'clock at night, they're voting, we shouldn't be meeting.
Yeah, we don't usually.
They're in the senior center, though.
All right, well, what's on the agenda? Why don't we leave it on for then, and we'll change.
We have a tax classification hearing scheduled for 6:30, and Public Safety Complex is coming in at 6:50, an executive session at 7:10 with Highway Union, and that's it.
I, I, I don't want to meet in that.
I think that's probably, we've tried to avoid that, so we either move it or lose it. You want to move it later in the week? Make it the 7th?
November 7th, is that the?
That'll be Wednesday.
I'd rather do that than election night.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
So we repost after and make arrangements to transfer everybody to November 7th?
Yeah.
And send, send out a memo to everybody to remind them about that, including me. And then November 20th is the town meeting. And we only have the one meeting in November? That can't, oh, because Thanksgiving comes.
November 7th, right.
Yeah, that's why, that's one of the reasons we had it, because we didn't want to do it the Thanksgiving week. All right, so that's, so we're only going to have one meeting in November?
November 7?
November 7.
Okay.
And I almost think we ought to put a mother meeting on just in case we need it before Thanksgiving. What's the week before Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving is the 22nd, that's a Thursday.
I think you ought to post a meeting for that week before Thanksgiving, just in case, and if we don't need it, we're canceling. Okay, we are now.
I think we have to do that five-star thing.
Oh.
I had a, I went to court Wednesday.
Oh.
Small claims for five-star. I went into mediation, and I was only getting, I was, I was able to reduce it by $300. They came up to information that I didn't have prior to it, that they submitted to the Building Needs Committee, that they purchased a slab that I wasn't aware of.
All right.
So, so we agreed on 1575, their claim was 1840 plus court cost, that's 1575 includes court cost.
All right, so where does this money come from?
I don't know, we don't have any money left. Well, you probably, what's our, I don't know what our expense item is on the Larrabee school, but, I mean, the Larrabee maintenance fund, the only thing I can think of that I'm on there.
All right, well, we need to.
And play shit later on.
All right, so will you make up a warrant, or put it into the bill warrant somewhere?
I don't know how much is in there, Reggie, so, I don't want to have you strapped, but.
Well, you got to look, you got to look and tell us where we got money.